About six thirty, let's go ahead and get started this evening. Welcome everyone to the work session. We've got three items tonight. First is our capital improvements program presentation. I assume we'll lead off. David?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Run through the projects fairly quickly and defer to Jeff, Jim, and Tim for any specifics on projects. I grabbed the wrong book. Projects are pretty much what you saw last year. Includes stormwater, transportation, water source and treatment, wastewater, stream stability analysis for the Gardner Greenway is still in there, and an update to the park's master plan is still around. It's based on these documents. The assumption, we use current dollars in priority order not based on availability of funds. Items are shown at the full cost in the year of construction, not as debt payments, and grant and other funding is not shown as an offset. Does not include Gardner Energy projects. It's not comprehensive, nor it will be changing next year and from year to year. And the assumptions are based on, this is developed based on the assumptions of developments that we know of and which could be changing. As last year, the challenges are the declines in revenue, sales, property taxes, rates to reduce funding available for projects, future state funding for projects is uncertain, no direct funding sources available for stormwater improvements, thus compete with every other project we have for general funds. And kind of just to highlight what's being said all along is there's just a significant lack of funds for the needs that we could see. Start off, kind of jumps the order, but goes into the water fund, which comes from water revenues. This would be out of the, generally the rate structure, not from the system development fees. Major projects for water fund, and I apologize for the order of this. Waterline replacement program, we're projecting about 3.3 million would be needed over a five-year period. 60,000 is programmed for 2013 to start on engineering, and it's basically 60,000 one year, about a half a million or so the next year, and offset design and construction. Small project for next year, which was started this year, is to rearrange some of the piping at Kill Creek Tower. This will just facilitate better distribution and flow between the various distribution lines and the tower. Gardner Lake dredging is out there. We've had a pending request for assistance through the state. It kind of, their funding's uncertain. We're showing it as about 1.3 million. It's about a million dollar grant, take about 300,000 from the city. Until we have a date when that state funding shows up, we'll just keep showing it as unfunded. One project we have is the Conestoga Mobile Home Park Waterline. The city took over that water line many years ago. A lot of it is a very thin pipe, which was the standard at the time the thing, the park was installed. However, it's a, an issue we've got, we're facing. There's a couple of projects too. Gardner Lake Dam Evaluation, that's something we do periodically, just as part of the owner of the dam. And there's additional maintenance to the tower, exterior painting and, or interior painting, and both the 183rd Street Tower, which we painted the exterior of this year, and the Clearwell at Hillsdale Plant. But Water Development Fund, once again, these are capacity and production costs. The only thing that we would like to see is just a engineering study to look at some modular treatment plant expansions at the Hillsdale Plant itself. No funding for construction, but to look at and check on the feasibility of bringing in essentially skid mounted, very, very similar of the type of plant we had from the wastewater side down at Gardner Road and I-35 several years ago. And finally, eventually, we will have to look at additional water storage tank at some point, but this is out in the future. Wastewater Fund, once again, this would be from the rate structure. Sewer line replacement, just periodic replacement of our existing facilities. Not requesting anything next year, but down the line, start looking at programming in a replacement program for some of our water lines. The other project that's out there, that's not funded, is a, there's a interceptor on the, west of Main Street that basically follows between, along, between Center and Poplar, about Shawnee or so. It's a, be a maintenance replacement. Wastewater Development Fund, this would be the system development fund projects. The major project we have, we've always carried the Kill Creek Plant Phase Two, South List Station upgrades as major projects. However, a lot of those can be delayed because of the agreement we had with the Edgerton. We're showing the full estimated cost of that coming online next year. We're still working with KDHE on a system development fund, or excuse me, revolving loan. Got a plug number of 900,000 in there, basically it'd be in and out. Right now, we're looking at around 6.7 million in debt to be obligated and then start paying that off. And I think the ballpark cost is 450 a year or so.
For the 6.7?
For the 6.7. That'd get us underway. Rest of the projects, for the most part, are replacement of our smaller list stations by the installation of gravity lines, so we can take those offline. The one that you see, number 10, is in progress, and that's the White Drive, which is being done as part of the USD project.
Where is the south, did you say where the south list station is, the one that's on, it's got 1.4 million dollars?
South List Station, okay. The south list station is the large, one of our large list station at Gardner Road on the south side of I-35, east of Gardner Road. It was installed with the Kill Creek Treatment Plant in 2002.
South side of Gardner, or east side of Gardner Road in what?
East side of Gardner Road, south of I-35. It's probably an eighth of a mile east of Gardner Road. Stormwater projects, once again, as I mentioned before, we don't have a dedicated funding source. Right now, we're showing what would be good. The stormwater management plan is something we need to do. We don't have any money set aside for it. We'll just have to, for help to get us ready for NPDES Phase Three. Because of the upcoming census change, we'll have to just use general fund sources. The second project, the 50,000 is shown as a preliminary engineering study. This is a project that has shown up through both the county's Kill Creek watershed study and our stormwater master plan as something that cannot handle the future fully developed floodplain. It would be eligible for county participation. This is just basically to keep it in our sights that at some point, local funds would be desirable to be able to pick up 75% county funds.
Is the NTSD, is that the acronym for the?
National Pollution Elimination Discharge Program. And the City of Gardner has kind of fallen under the radar because of the time it went in, we were 10,000 people. We fall for a lot of the items for that under the county's wing for a lot of the public involvement, but there'll be some regulations, some mapping requirements that we will need.
Okay. Is that the 10,000?
Yeah. And that's 10,000 for, basically to off, to get outside help for staff.
To do the, okay.
To do some of the work.
David?
Go ahead.
I have two quick questions. Are these in what you would, you guys would consider priority order, or are they just?
They're the last year's priority order, and they're kind of, since they're unfunded, they're just kind of, the ones that have money would be higher priority than the ones that aren't.
Okay. So you didn't just say, we have this much money, so we're going to try and fit them in? It's truly?
There's no money to fit in, it's just kind of hears.
But for the ones that are funded, or the ones that you're requesting funding for, I guess I should say?
Right. And I'd say of those, the 10,000 is something that we would, could, would use help on. The other thing that's noteworthy is the small stormwater projects. We constantly get issues for not major, major projects, excuse me, backyard issues. At some point, if we do have a dedicated funding, it would be good to have an ability to, if we, if they came out in priority order, if it was something that the residents needed help with, it would be good to have a funding source. As is now, we get calls every time it rains. It's been pretty quiet since it hasn't rained until a couple of weeks ago. But, you know, there are some issues that it would be great to be able to help, but we, you know, for the most part, we can go out and say, gosh, you know, that, this could happen, but the city can't help you because we have no funding.
Do we have the offsetting, so for instance, one of these, remove the temporary lift station on 167th Street for 84,000 dollars? I'm assuming there's costs associated with operating that lift station. I think at one time, we said for large lift stations, it could be as much as 75,000 a year?
35.
35, okay, sorry. But, so, I mean, are there savings that will be associated with removing that? Can we, I guess for the stuff that you're requesting funding for, is there any way for us to see what that would be?
We could provide that as we go on.
Okay.
As, as we get into budget, sure.
Okay.
Because I think, once again, this is a perimeter, the final approval of this would be as part of the budget document.
Right.
And so, certainly could be done, yes.
Didn't we have a stormwater plan, going back to the other slide? And wasn't that why Celia Duran was hired back in?
Well, no, she was hired as a city engineer to help with the engineering, but we did have a.
County paid for her?
We did have a, we have a stormwater master plan. These projects were identified as part of that.
So the 10,000 dollars is just an update, or what?
Well, this is, this is, this is not, that particular study did not cover the issues that would be needed for this to become in compliance with the NPDES Phase Two. This would just be to assist us in coming up with, meeting the regulate, that kind of, those regulations.
And so, looking at all these, you know, they're, they're all developer-related problems that, I mean, what was the disconnect that, that they're, you know, they had standing water problems in some of these recently, recently developed subdivisions?
Well, some of them, it's, it's a case of getting our standards updated. A lot of these go back to the time where you had a, a staff of two folks trying to keep track of rampant development, trying to bring our stand, we need to bring our standards, which we're working toward to. One thing that will help us greatly, want to get in place before development starts going again, is as-built grading. So when the development, the subdivision comes in, you have a grading, a grading plan is provided for the entire subdivision. Currently, our regs are not, are loose on making sure it's built to those standards. Then the next biggest problem is each house comes in individually, and to come up with a, to have a standard where they, the builder has to verify he's complied with the drainage plan for the subdivision. And that will require an as-built survey. That's a reg we've been needing to bring forward, which we'd like to do this year or next year at the latest, so we'll be ready for the next push, once the economy does turn around.
But for instance, on the Jamestown Open Channel, did that, I mean?
That came through about 98. It was approved as the standard to today. 98, 2000. It predated me, I can, that's all I can tell you. It's kind of a maintenance issue for the residents. Apparently, the city's mowing it because the way it's plotted, each individual homeowner is responsible for a small piece of it. Needless to say, nobody jumps over the wall to mow it, so we'll mow it. It would be nice to come in at some point and close it, but there's no money, and where does it fit on the grand scale? But it's out there.
And then in Parma, didn't we?
We did a, this, that was the part that was just adjacent to the.
Maplewood Place.
You'll count the Maplewood Place area. However, the entire subdivision predates current stormwater standards, is very minimal stormwater, storm sewer in the subdivision because of its day, its year. And this would be something to go back in and retrofit a storm sewer at some point.
But they didn't have any problems until Maplewood Place came in, right?
No, the entire subdivision really doesn't have good drainage. And it's debatable as to whether they had a problem before, but they had, we were able to commute, get community development funds to fix it.
But only how many houses?
It was just about, as I recall, about 13 or 14. And this would be a, the whole intent of this would be to go back and review the entire subdivision and come up with a storm sewer system.
But that problem along the Maplewood Place line has been solved?
Yes. Have taken care of that, that was just a small piece of it. The entire subdivision would bear some looking at.
Where's the flooding at, in that, that subdivision, where the, the standing water?
In backyards, it's in streets. You know, once again, it's, it's an issue you have out there.
Well, I mean, my backyard does it specifically, but I can see people around where there is standing water at points in time.
You know, I mean, people are surviving now. I mean, if we had the funds, these would be good projects. But we don't. Street Improvement Reserve, these are the projects that are funded from the, basically the excise tax. It's originally conceived as a debt finance. These are capacity projects driven by increased traffic, driven by congestion. We've updated it, we do have the transportation master plan and other sources. At the top, the list will still carry the traffic signals on the moonlight, we're watching those, as we discussed. They don't meet the warrants yet. Debt, our debt plan does include funding for them when they do come online. One project we're also watching is 183rd and Center. A project who of interest is at number five, we were actually able to get some, a UMKC engineering class wanted a project to do a preliminary engineering study for us, so we provided a survey, and they're looking at solutions to the intersection of Cedar Niles and 175th Street. This is based on one of their estimates they've worked up. They're looking about the feasibility of a roundabout there. Other options would include a traffic signal that would be tied in with the signal at Cedar Niles. If you did go down to the bottom of the page, 19, we are looking at the Cedar Niles and US-56 intersection was designed to add a second left turn lane for Northbound. We're looking into that project, very likely, won't need to take it out of this fund if once we get, basically confirm it's needed, it's something we could probably handle through our operating budget. We're working with KDOT on that. The signal's already designed to take an additional head. The lanes are already ready to add, I mean, the roadway is ready to add another lane, so it's a case of removing striping, adding striping, changing signal timing, adding a head, and doing some reviews. So that's a fairly quick project. Most of these are out there, these are projects we know that will need someday. Of note, number eight, 10, 11, 16 are needed once development starts occurring on the east side of I-35. These were identified initially in the Lowe's Transportation Impact Study, and then finally confirmed in our transportation master plan. We do have, showing the 188th Street to 191st Street Extension Project at some point. For good traffic flow, it's going to be needed. The danger of that is, we're very likely, if the development closes in, we could lose the opportunity to do that project, but no money's available for it. Just wanted to bring that one up.
And that's over there by the apartments?
Yes. 188th Street, it's basically a connection, what, what is needed there, the existing 191st Street intersection with Gardner Road is right at the interchange. It's so close, there's no room for traffic regardless of where it's going, even if it's developed in our area. To get off the interchange, go north and make a left. The best flow, we, it would be to go ahead and take them up to 188th Street, bring them back around. The city's comp plan has always showed a connection, but not necessarily where this one is, because this evolved out about 2007 and 2008. But with the way things worked out, basically was, basically went on hold. But something that would be very essential for good traffic flow in the south part of the city, it's not funded. I don't know where the funding would come from.
Did the developer pay for the 188th Street entrance?
The 188th Street was built by a benefit district in about 2003.
For?
Machine crossing.
And that was, really, there was no development then, there, was there?
No, nothing is.
So the apartments, or, it's actually the property north of the 188th, right? The one that we had trouble collecting, or do we still have trouble collecting?
No, actually, we're almost paid off, and I got an email that we make it all.
But it's, it's that property that you're?
Right.
Right. Once it, once it develops, because this, this connection along the west line of that particular parcel we're talking about, wasn't planned when that parcel was originally planted. However, as part of some preliminary work during the intermodal era, this was originally conceived as a temporary connection from Gardner Road Interchange to the intermodal, with the assumption that the interchange KDOT is building today, wasn't going to come in. Since that came in, the need for this short term was diminished. However, long term, as that part of Gardner develops, a good connection to I-35, to Gardner Road, for areas within our service area and our future boundary would be needed for good traffic flow.
So if that area were built up, the developer would pay for the, for the road, right?
Not necessarily, because this road was not originally planned when both properties on either side of it was platted.
There was, I mean, the road that's there now was, was planned?
Right. This basically picks up on that road and goes south to 191st Street. It's an issue, it's outstanding, it's an outstanding issue that we have to look at. Right now, it's, we're using 191st Street.
But if the, if the development takes off and somebody wanted to put more apartments on either side of that, would they be required to put a larger road, access road into that?
If they come in off 188th Street, no. This, this is the connection between 188th and 191st Street from the west end of the existing road, along that west property line. Any other questions? Okay. Special Highway Fund, this is funded from our motor fuels tax distributions. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, usually around a half a million a year, give or take, collected by the state of Kansas, distributed to cities on a prorata based on We've always funded our annual street, concrete, basically our street rehab program. In a perfect world, our estimates really haven't changed from several years now, to maintain a maintenance program, we, in a perfect world, we'd be spending about one and a quarter million dollars a year. At the moment, this is our, really our only funding source. It's also, it's availability of funds is diminished because we're having to pull money from this fund to offset the debt from, in the Street Improvement Fund, which was collected on the excise taxes, because our, basically our debt performer. At the moment, it's our only funding source. Right now, we're using it to leverage state and, both state and federal funds for the Center and Main Street project. I'm just showing the total construction cost, it's actually less than that, but this is the total. Another project we've been carrying is the sidewalk extension program, which would be basically filling gaps in our system. We've, once again, to keep up with that, estimate 100,000 a year. It's not funded, but it's something we'd like to keep on our list. Just to give an idea of maintenance, this is kind of an approximation of what a 10-year program would look like. Right now, this is about what we're able to get. Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, general fund sources, funds the building program for facilities, also for parks. Public Works, the salt dome is something we're able to keep pushing back because we were gridded on an annual basis, a barn on West 167th. So it works, we use, you know, from last year, we used 80 tons of salt, we normally use about 100, or 1,200 tons of salt. Building maintenance, one of the projects that would be talked about a few times, would be to upgrade the control system for the HVAC, get away from our 27 thermostats, get away from a system that fights itself. Dean and I were talking a little more about it. Generally, you have one zone that will be calling for more heat, and you'll be one zone that calls for more cool. The compressor files off, sends cool air out. However, in the warmer zone, the resistors pop up to warm it, warm it up. As a centralized system, we would be able to control and use the firing of the compressors and the firing of the resistive heats. Other projects of note, at some point, a fire alarm system would be good, and here it meets code. However, basically, the only audible signal is outside. We had a study done several years ago. As I say, we do meet code, however, it would be good to have some strobes and horns available for added.
How does that meet code? I mean, how do people know that there's a fire, other than waters, you know, coming out of the ceiling on their desk? I'm assuming that the whole building doesn't, doesn't have an active sprinkling system when there's, when the fire's contained in one area, right?
The, the fire sprinklers would go in a zone, however, if there was an alarm of some sort, as I say, the, the only audible thing is on the outside of the building, which is meeting the building code.
How would anyone know to get out? I mean?
If it goes, then people are alerted through the PA system. That's why someday, we would like to make some changes, but as I say, it's, it's meeting the code for the building.
And the, and the city hall is still being heated and cooled on the weekends? Have we figured out a way to fix that?
Actually, what happens, it goes into a standby mode. The whole system is overridden, it drops down to, in the summer, I can't tell you the exact temperature, it'll go up to maybe 80 degrees, in the winter, it'll drop it down to 60 degrees. And then, as the, you know, closer to the workday, then it'll bring it back up. So I was, I know you asked that question a while back, and weekends and off hours, it does go into a standby mode.
I thought that was the basis for the savings, was that we were heating and cooling the building? I mean, that was one of the first presentations that was made regarding the.
Actually, the. Actually, the, where it was going and what the issue was is, once again, the fact that you have the zones fighting each other, you have the compressors on the roof or the air conditioning. However, the heating system or resistive heats at various locations throughout the building. So basically, the way our system works now, the air conditioner units will fire up to cool some area, but if you do have a call for more heat, then that cooled air will be heated by going to a, instead of individual thermostats, you go to a control system that will handle it differently.
I guess I'm still trying to figure out the mechanics of how the 27 thermostats, which are not programmable, which is one of the things on the list, effectively through a PC-based system. How do they, how do they call for 60 degrees in the winter and 80 degrees in the summer if they're individually?
The system, and this is, I'm wading out of my area of expertise, I know enough to be dangerous. There is basically some sort of central control system that will make, override everything, but when you're running on your normal occupied building, it goes to control of the thermostat.
How's it control it, though? I mean, if each thermostat controls, I assume, a damper or a?
That is correct.
Then how does it, how does it do that?
Well, it just goes to, instead of listening to or responding to all 27 when you're on standby, there's a few key thermostats that it pays attention to. It regulates based on those and the rest of them just float or whatever temperature will.
Which is the last temperature that was used in the building during working hours?
No, they're totally overridden and it's just the thermostats in, I think, the lobby and two other areas. And the others are ignored by the system. Finally, about 18, 19 Parks and Rec projects, actually I have 18 twice on this, roughly $6.4 million in Parks and Recreation projects that would be indicated as needed in the next five years. No funding is available at this point. Probably any further questions, I would probably defer to Jeff on those projects.
And for those of you, this is your first time with the capital improvement plan, I'll give you just a brief history on this for the Parks and Recreation Department and how we generated this list. Back in 2002, we developed the city's first park system master plan. And in that process, we did some survey work as well as worked with a number of citizens and interested parties in developing the plan. The end result, we were able to create a list of potential projects that was created and that's what has been adopted here in the capital improvement plan itself. So all the projects you see listed here, and this is not all inclusive to what is listed in the Park System Master Plan, but there are a good number of them in here. It was developed as a result of developing the Park System Master Plan. As far as list of priorities, some of these would, would come to fruition from opportunities that may come up, whether land is donated or made available for, because of one project or another. Others may be because of safety concerns. In fact, the first one on the list is our two low water crossings on the Gardner Greenway. Those of you that have been through this before have heard this item come up before and there are some safety concerns as well as some erosion concerns with our low water crossings there. So that's why you see that at the top of the list as a priority. But again, others simply could come up with opportunities strike. The one item that is on here that I'd like to mention specifically that is not included in the Park System Master Plan, and that's the Gardner Golf Course Master Plan project for $50,000. Currently, the Gardner Golf Course is under an operating agreement. That agreement expires in 2018, so the council will be faced with some heavy decisions to make related to the Gardner Golf Course. A guide such as this could be helpful in developing a list of improvements that would be necessary, specifically safety improvements, as well as playability improvements, things of that nature. So as we get closer and closer to that expiration date, the current agreement, that is certainly something that you'll want to consider looking into. It could be very helpful in planning or planning ahead for when that date does come. Helpful to you in making a decision on what you would like to do, whether it be extend that agreement to the current operator or go out for bid to look for another operator or operate it in-house like many other municipalities do. So I thought I'd point that one out specifically because the clock is ticking on that facility and it is under, under contract currently. It expires in August of 2018.
Hey, Jeff. With this golf course master plan, would you recommend or would there be an opportunity to make any small improvement that were recommended by that plan prior to 2018 or would we definitely have to wait until then?
Absolutely. I think with council's approval, we certainly could push for or recommend such improvements immediately. And to give you a little bit of history in that, currently, the city receives a small percentage of revenue back from the operators as part of the agreement. Years ago, as an incentive to push forward with some improvements now versus later, the council was in favor of matching dollar for dollar up to the amount provided to the city from that contract for any improvements that may be listed on a capital improvement plan. I worked with an architect on developing a fairly simple capital improvement plan for the Gardner Golf Course to include things like concrete carp paths and T-box enlargements or improvements, green improvements, things that we felt would be there in 2018 when it expired. So those funds wouldn't be available for overseeding or fertilizing, something like that. But to answer your question, I think, I think so. I think it could be used. Certainly, we'd want to include the current operator in on some of those discussions as well.
On items nine and 10, infrastructure and neighborhood park development, are those, is there opportunity in any of those that as development comes that developers will bear part of that cost or are these truly things that are in existence today, subdivisions already there and it's just an enhancement to the existing?
Well, it's a great question. Currently, we, as you know, we charge park impact fees to developers as they come in to purchase their building permit. So in the Park System Master Plan, what we identified those dollars to typically be used for, they don't have to be, but our goal was to utilize those to purchase neighborhood parkland and develop neighborhood parks. So as new developments would come in, then park impact fee dollars would be utilized for that. Now, that hasn't always been the case. We've used park impact fee dollars for other park improvements over the years, but Wynwood Park is developed that way. Stone Creek Park was developed that way. The next park that was scheduled for development and put on hold was Quell Meadows Park in the Quell Meadows subdivision. So that's the next one that has been designed for and is on the shelf until funds become available. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Chip, I was just curious about number three here, the security camera. I was just curious if there's been incidents that have happened on the facility that video cameras could have, I don't know, assaulted crime or prevented or anything else, or if this is just something that you, we'd like to have in place or if it's something that could have helped in the past with some minutes?
Well, it's one thing you'd like to think that you don't mean until something happens. We do currently have some security cameras in some of our facilities. The Aquatic Center is one of those facilities. However, this particular item was included coming from a discussion I had with Chief Francis a number of years ago. So this has been on the list for a while. He would like to see some additional cameras put in place. And I think some of it spurs from some things that have happened in parking lots around the county, not necessarily specifically the Gardner or the Gardner Aquatic Center, but just as a safety precaution to help them in case something was to happen. It's a facility that averages anywhere from 900 to 1,100 visitors per day and a lot of traffic. So I think that, that's the reasoning behind that request.
What is worn out on the steel gutter system? What, I thought corrosion is, is that, is it corroded?
It's not corroded. It is stainless steel. What you have there, the, I believe those gutters were original in, best I can tell, in 1988, 89, when the Lap Lane Pool was constructed or renovated, if you will. But over, over time, they do break down. There are a number of welds in that gutter system and we are, we have been seeing some problems here recently, in recent years. That cost estimate comes from our engineer and designer of the Gardner Aquatic Center expansion. I had him take a quick look at it and give us a cost estimate and he agrees that here, at some point down the road, we will be faced with gutter replacement for that, that particular pool. So it's just for the Lap Lane Pool, the older pool, if you will.
Can't they re-weld those pieces back together?
We have been. In the areas that we can reach and cut, and there are, there are individuals that can successfully weld stainless steel and do a pretty good patch down. But inside that gutter system, there's also a, I will call it a tunnel, if you will, where the return lines are. And so if we have more and more breaks in the welds or failures in that, that system, it may be better to just replace the whole thing. So it's certainly an expensive fix or replacement, I should say, but it's also had a pretty long useful life too, if it in fact has been in place since 88 or 89. I can go to the next page and look at the list there unless there's any other questions for anything listed on this page.
What would have to happen in order for you to be able to fund these? I mean, right now, it doesn't look like anything's going to get funded.
That's correct.
I mean, I assume we have a triage system where the sewers and water lines get fixed and the roads get fixed first, so we have to basically work through $32 million with those expenses on those, I think is what the BPU came up with, right Chris? $32 million in deferred maintenance items?
Yeah, something like that.
So you, we have to have $32 million first before any of your projects get tackled?
That would be something for the council to certainly.
I think we'd have to balance it because park infrastructure, like any other infrastructure, is something we own and needs to be maintained. So if, you know, if it's, if a park issue comes up and it has to be repaired because, say, the pool will fail because of it, then we'll have to weigh it against everything else we've got, like everything, it's triage.
There were general fund monies that were budgeted before things got really much tighter here in recent years that went towards these type of capital improvements. For a while, it was somewhere in the neighborhood, I believe, if my memory serves, somewhere around $100,000 a year in the, in the parks budget to go towards replacing things, fixing things, whether it be ball field lighting at West Side Park or fencing or whatever those items may have been that needed to be repaired or replaced. We haven't been doing that here in recent years due to the tight budgets. So how to fund them certainly is the, the big question and the tough part at this point. Coming up with the list, we're able to tweak and work on every year fairly easily, but funding them is the difficult part.
What are other cities doing to fund some of these type of projects? Do they have some sort of revenue generators, whether it's additional fees, maybe on tournament teams and things of that nature and so they get almost like a usage tax? So folks that are using the fields without maybe being a resident start sharing in some of those costs. Do other communities do that sort of thing?
I think they do a number of different things. Certainly, general fund monies do come into play in maintaining city facilities. User fees certainly are a factor, but a lot of the times the user fee goes towards the operations part of it. And if you can cover operations, then that's pretty successful as it is. You know, taxes certainly. Sometimes, depending on the facilities, you could have surcharges, if you will, which is just part of the fees that are being charged. So occasionally, now they're a bit dried up now, but occasionally there's even grants to help out with some type, some of these types of things. But for some of the projects listed here, I think that'd be tough to find today.
Some of the trail work that was done, bridges and so on, partners with Johnson County, Ransay Air.
And some of those are funded by a dedicated mill levy specifically for that purpose.
For that purpose, right?
Yeah, and in fact, for next trail development, if the city decides to go this way, 2014, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $90,000. We've, we've communicated with the Johnson County Park District in providing $90,000, give or take, to go towards trail development, followed by in the low hundred, hundreds, hundreds of thousands in 2015. Now, if that stays the course in their budget process, we'll have to continue to communicate with them and see if that is the case. I'll see if I can find that here real quick as well to give you an exact number. They had plugged in their 2014 budget, $90,000 for us to do trail development and $150,000 in 2015. The area pinpointed for that would be around the Quell Meadows Neighborhood Park that has been designed for development. So that was part of the thought process there is, is to start our first leg of trail development in that area. So that's, that's another good example of partnering with outside agencies to, to help with that.
Is item number 13 not correctly stated because there was $250,000 for the concession stand?
That's, that's correct, yeah. It should be listed as $250,000.
But are you, you would recommend that we buy signage first or was it also?
Not necessarily, no.
I mean, in other words, it would have been department requests for 2013 above signage or?
Again, back to the statement I made, some of them may come to opportunities that would become available. You know, whether signage, park signage should come before that particular building or vice versa, that might be something we want to discuss, the pros and cons of having, having those things. Certainly, the West Side Park, the sports complex sees a lot of use during the seasons starting right now. And the concession facility and restroom facilities specifically are below par on what we'd like to have for our facilities. And an example of that, we are hosting the 11 and 12-year-a, 12-year-old boys state boys state baseball tournament this year. And they offered to give us the four teams as well, to have three age groups. And as much as we would have loved to have had all three of them with our parking and restroom facilities at West Side Park, we didn't feel that we could do justice for a state tournament for triple-A level for all three age groups at the same time. So we told them we'd do a perfect job for elevens and twelves, though we'd better hold off on the four teams at this time. So discussing priorities may be something we'd want to do as funds are identified, whether park signage would come before a concession facility, that would be debatable.
Why would you use the Celebration Park for that?
We do.
For that tournament?
Yes. It's a Thursday through Sunday tournament.
So you need all of those?
Quite large, yes, yeah.
And what opportunities do you see coming down the pike for, instance, for park concessions and replacements? Is there something that you would see?
I think, I think number one, just providing a better facility for our current users is the main interest. Certainly, there's four ball fields there currently, so how many more people we could bring in at once is certainly, there's a limit to that. But probably the main complaint that we would get for any of our athletic facilities would be our concession and restroom facility there. So improving our current conditions would be the main reason behind it. The, you know, I mentioned the state tournament. There could be some opportunities that would, we could be able to expand on a little bit with having a little bit better facilities there. But again, it's, you're limited to what you can do, whether it be with parking or number of fields, et cetera. So I don't think building a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar facility would necessarily pay for itself because of the additional tournaments we would have there, additional play, but it would improve the conditions for the current users.
One of the requests that we've had from participants in the adult programs is the sale of cereal malt beverages for adult programs. If we were to do that, could you, could we dedicate profits or whatever from that, from the sale of that, to go into a fund that we identify it for, for the concession stand replacement or specific? Yeah, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what kind of revenue we would see in that.
Sure. Well, I may have to look to Laura to help answer that, but, yeah, I think that would be a discussion that we'd want to have for multiple reasons. You know, the pros and cons of serving alcohol in our parks and facilities, and then where those funds would go. I can tell you that this spring, we had a record number of adult teams sign up to play in our spring leagues. We have forty-two. I was just visiting with someone the other day, thinking when I first started here twelve years ago, I was worried that we'd have a league at all in the summer. Now we do three leagues, multiple divisions, spring, summer, and fall. So the interest is certainly picking up. So there may be some opportunities with something like that if the council would like to discuss to us. And there are other agencies that are.
Blue Valley does it.
Yeah, Blue Valley in Johnson County.
In Johnson County, well.
And maybe some others that I may not be aware of.
And I don't know, trying to think if there's others out there, but I know Blue Valley does.
Yes.
Mid-America.
Yeah, Mid-America, yeah.
Right. Do we ever go out and either solicit or open the door for sponsorship opportunities, whether it comes to a park or playground, or, you know, a concession facility for exclusive user vendor agreement, that sort of thing?
Absolutely.
Is that offset some of these costs?
That's a great question, absolutely. In fact, I was just sharing with, at a staff meeting, our newest addition, we have our weather hotline, where we are able to accept many, many calls at once on a rain day or something. We have sold sponsorship to even that, so that it's brought to you by. So that's our latest. Our concession cups are all souvenir cups, two different sizes, about thirty, thirty to thirty-five thousand of them a season. We sell advertising space on half of the cup to cover our costs on that and then some. We sell sponsorships for a number of our leagues. Those are always opportunities, our special events. At the Aquatic Center, all of our tubes have Price Chopper's logo on them. They pay, they pay to cover costs for that. So a lot of times, our sponsorships help cover some costs that we may have with purchasing these materials or operating, but it can be challenging to generate the number of dollars on a fairly, still fairly small agency to cover these kind of capital costs. Pepsi, as you're familiar with, we just entered into an agreement with them for five years with an exclusive agreement where we receive a payment from them as well. So there are a number of examples, all, many of which are even listed on our website for businesses to choose from. And we actively solicit that as well. We send out some mailers and do some emails and things for some of that too.
So on the, on the website, there's places that say, that advertise the sponsorship?
For the opportunities, we have, yes. I think if my memory serves me, if you go to the Parks and Recreation page and you look towards the top, you would see something that says, may say sponsorship or advertising opportunities, if my memory serves.
Jeff, I just have one more question.
Yes.
You said a partnership, I think, with Johnson County for the trail development, ninety thousand dollars and then a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this one year. Do we have any, I mean, does that have to be used for new trail development, or can those funds be reallocated or like the Greenway Trail Crossing on an existing trail?
I can check with them to make sure, but I believe the way I understand it is, once developed, then it's the city's to maintain. So when it's time for whatever level of maintenance, whether it be replacement of cracked ceiling, slurry ceiling, bridge replacement, then it would be the city's responsibility. That's their part of the deal. I can double check with them to make sure, to see if that's changed, but that's the message that I had received in my number of conversations with their staff. I certainly will ask them that question about our current need. They were a part of developing the Gardner Greenway, so they may look at it as that way, but I'll certainly ask them. I can go to the next page quickly here. And like I said, this listing includes things that are in the park system master plan, but it's not all inclusive. There are other items ranging for as much as a community center. That's a strong interest of many folks here in this community, is some type of community center. So that's probably the biggest dollar item. A skate park would be another example. So there are other items as well. Any other questions for me this time? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is that it for the presentation? Very good. Forty-six million, over five years unfunded.
Do you have a couple, a couple other questions for Dave? That I guess we went over, but maybe I didn't read them on my pages here. Regarding the closing of the, or creation of a quiet zone for Grand Street?
Mm-hmm.
And you had mentioned that that was in the Intermodal Review Committee report. Who has jurisdiction over where that could be closed or not? And how would you close it?
You would have to go through, really back up. With Moonlight, getting the Moonlight Quiet Zone was very easy because when we designed the medians, we basically put all the physical requirements for the, for the quiet zone in place. We just had to go through the process through the Federal Railways Administration. For Grand Street, you would have to apply through the railroad and then, if you close an entrance or a crossing, it's one thing. More difficult would be to make a quiet zone like Poplar, because then you would have to come up with the type of barricades to prevent people from going through.
So which do we think is going to happen there?
Well, at this point, we would have to initiate it at some point. We have not launched into that one yet because, once again, you have to go through a process. With regard to Grand Street, I don't have an answer for you on that.
But other than, is it the cemetery entrance that?
There's also private properties that take access off the end of Grand Street, too. There's a, between, between the cemetery, oh, east of the cemetery, between the tracks is privately owned property.
And does it have an access?
It has to go across that Grand Street.
It can't go north into the?
No. Their only choice would be through the cemetery, which is private property, or off of Grand Street.
So the, so the quiet zone would, I mean, you can't close it, so the quiet zone has to have the barricades. I mean, that's the only choice.
You have to, you basically have to have a certain length of, there's.
In other words, closing is not an option.
At this point, we have not found it to be an option.
You'd have to purchase the land behind the, between the tracks in order to, in order to close it. And I know the Cemetery Board would object to closure as well because they feel that's another way in or out if the, if the other tracks blocked. The Intermodal Agreement that we had originally had funding for quiet zones, both on Grand and Poplar, but that obviously went away. So, I mean, that would be our.
So if we petition, if we go through this process, then does the railroad pay for the, you know?
No, no, we didn't.
No, in a nutshell, what you do is you have to put the proper likes medians to prevent people from getting around the tracks or around the gates, or put quad gates in, and then the railroad's responsible for maintenance of a certain level of crossing structures, but anything above and beyond that would be our responsibility. At the case of Moonlight, since we put in the medians, which did not require the so-called quad gauge, which is a gate on either side of the tracks on both lanes, it's for much the same cost, there's no extra. But at these intersections, you would be looking at things like that.
Then one other question I have is, you had mentioned in the, but in the CIP Plan that the intersection at Gardner Road and Madison, or Center Street, Madison, whatever it's called at that point, that you had eight accidents there for the last two years?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But at Main and Gardner Road, we only had basically five access, accidents a year. I'm just wondering, why did we choose Main Street if it was, that was the, if the issue was accident avoidance?
Well, it's accident avoidance, and I think that's, actually, as I recall the numbers, you're probably looking at more than that. At Moonlight, Main, I'd have to review our numbers. One thing, we were able to find it.
You mean Gardner, Main?
Yes, I'm sorry. Every time I think of Main, I go to Moonlight. For some odd reason, I think it was been on my mind for a decade, but I don't adapt quickly, I guess. And also at Center, one thing we were able to, again, wrong, Center and Madison, with the traffic volumes, you recall about two years ago, we restriped it? We took care of the issues that we need to take care of at Center and Main, got the right place, because we were able to, the traffic volumes allowed us to go to a three-lane striping, so you basically have, you could put a, restrip it to give you a turn lane, which.
Because of the size, or?
Well, because of traffic volumes. There's just not that much traffic there. And, but we were able to, that's basically solving that issue for quite some time. There's no reason to spend the money to expand it further because we've, for the near term, we've basically have upgraded as far as we need to.
So we don't have accidents there?
Well, I don't know. I can't, I'd have to look at the data. I mean, you can't, you can't prevent people, protect people from themselves.
But at eight a year, that was, I can't remember what years those were, but.
Well, the older, prior to, prior to restriping that intersection, we were having issues because of the opposed left turns, people couldn't see. We didn't have a dedicated left, so if you were in the middle of the two lanes in each direction, you could go left or straight, and people didn't know.
Okay.
Part of it's probably tied into traffic counts as well, just through that intersection, I assume, when you compare the two, doesn't it? Traffic count, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And, you know, that's, you know, based on the volumes and based on the accidents, the types of accidents, it's a good project. Plus, we were able to secure outside funding for it also.
Right.
Yep. Okay, great.
Well, let's move on to access management then, for the, for the city, similar vein.
A second, please. As in our cover memo, one thing we say, delay congestion. If you have poor access management, you will end up with congestion and safety issues. Good examples, I point out, is Main Street between Moonlight and Center. Wasn't really designed, it just evolved. It evolved over a different time and a different place with different traffic volumes. Some of you will remember, at one point, it was a two-lane road with a lot of, a lot of individual properties. Access management is a way to provide good design guidance to planners and engineers when they're developing property, when they're planning roadway systems, so you can avoid continuing the issues we run into on Main Street. One of the odd things that the US-56 corridor study went through is pointed out driveways that during redevelopment during the future would be best to consolidate or close. What we'll get into in this document are ways to take care of that as things redevelop. Currently, the document that was attached to your memo was included as part of the Transportation Master Plan as a draft, access management guidelines. Council accepted the document in December of 'oh nine. Our current code also allows us to require a transportation impact study as needed for development, with very little guidance as to what should go into that document. And we also require developers to mitigate traffic impacts. The purpose of this document is to basically codify the guidelines so everyone knows the rules, knows what's expected of them. We've used this as guidance since December of 'oh nine, when development comes through. This document centered, similar to other cities such as Alatha and Lee's Summit. Access management, kind of a long laundry list of what it is. It's a tool to provide for and manage access to land development while preserving regional traffic flow. The intent is to balance the right of access to private property with the right of citizens to safe and efficient travel. The chart shows the hierarchy of streets, the hierarchy. The chart shows the hierarchy of streets, the higher type streets you have, the more limited the access. The extreme example is limited access freeways. At the other end of the scale, the local streets in the neighborhood, you have very free access, but very limited transportation. One of the keys to an access management program such as this one is just the classification of the street. You've got arterials, those are the, generally in Johnson County area, those are the section line roads. For Gardner, the arterials are Moonlight, 167th, Center, Waverly, 183rd, US-56, even though it's still under state jurisdiction. Collectors, Madison kind of falls in between a collector and a arterial, but it's technically a collector. Another collector would be like Poplar, even though it does have driveways fronting it, it does function as a collector. A better example of a collector under these type of guidelines would be White Drive through Willow Springs, where there's no direct access to it. But it picks up the locals, takes the traffic to the arterials. One of the items included in access management program is interchange functional area. The closer you get to an interchange or an intersection, the more you need to limit access because studies have shown that the more distractions, the more safety issues you have, the more access you have, the more capacity reductions you have. Typically, this program follows these guidelines, which mirrors Lee's Summit and Alatha. The same holds for intersection functional area. The larger the road and arterial you need to have, keep your driveways farther away from the intersection than you would on an intersection of two locals where you could have them, you know, along with the way.
Can you go back to that previous slide, Dave? So is, in this particular example, is 188th Street, I guess it has to be, how far away from the ramp?
In a perfect world, you would have a median and to have full access, you'd want, basically full access, you'd want it a quarter mile away. So 188th Street's about there. Obviously, existing conditions, physical constraints will require you to alter somewhat, but this is where you want to start. You'd like to keep on the departure from the ramp, you'd like to keep your driveways at least 750 feet away. And on the approach to the ramp, you'd like to have it at least 990 feet away. Once again, you're going to have to vary based on reality, but if in a perfect world, this is what you'd be shooting for. And then if you have an existing condition, then you have to work around it as best you can.
Because I don't think 188th Street is a quarter of a mile from the ramp. Is it probably more like a tenth of a mile?
Honestly, can't remember. It's approaching it, but I can't honestly tell you. But this is an example of what you're trying to achieve, once again, if you're starting with a clean slate. Intersection functional area, once again, is a very similar type situation. Also figuring into is access spacing to the higher type road. If you had medians, we typically, at this point, do not have medians, but with medians, you would, the ideal would be a median break every quarter of a mile when you go to higher type speeds. But you have these spacings to, once again, limit your access and then ways you control those, as we'll get into later, is cross-access and spacing of that type or access off of lower type roadways. Traffic signal spacing, once again, when you're dealing with arterials, you'd like to keep them farther away because if you have closely spaced signals, then you end up with backups. Sometimes you can't avoid it. At some point, you're going to see one at Lincoln Lane and Center Street, those will be very closely spaced, but once it's warranted, that's just something that we'll have to accept because of the way the roads are laid out. Typically, do not want to, or you do not want to install signals unless you're meeting one or more signal warrants, as we've talked about on other projects, specifically the case of Lincoln Lane and Warren. Medians, I see in Gardner's future, medians more at major intersections than throughout, but at some point, as we expand, we'll be seeing them. Type of breaks in medians are the full access, which has left turn lanes. A partial is where you run into, where you can make a left turn into something and then you can only make right turns in or out. And then there's finally the right in, right out, which is just what it says. Auxiliary lanes, and we, when you have a development coming and it's warranted based on the study, you'd put in a right turn lane. An example of a right turn lane that resulted from the traffic study was for the QuickTrip facility. Right turn will be going into their entrance off of Main Street. The turn lanes where you have higher volumes, we currently don't have any streets except for, the only street that approaches the higher volumes is Main Street. Multi-lane roads, or medians, excuse me, multi-lane roads over 45 miles per hour, we don't have any of those. But once again, as we talked on medians, it's just more application for us in the short term will be at intersections. Auxiliary lanes, left turns into developments, right turns, as I was talking about, to Site circulation is something that needs to be looked at to make sure that the development has good circulation so they're not trying to use the public street to provide circulation for the development, but they're able to get the traffic into their site and can circulate Once again, residential, try to discourage non-local traffic on local streets. Shopping centers, once again, limiting those connections. One thing you will find if a shopping center or commercial orders on a arterial or collector, encourage the access off of the collector instead of the arterial to keep the arterial Joint and cross-access is part of this, of most documents of this type, is to encourage if you have multiple developments adjacent to each other. A good example is as Main Street redevelops, instead of driveways continually, if there are opportunities to allow a common driveway with properties to access through those parking lots adjacent, that's much better than multiple driveways. We do have several cases of access easements. Case is for Dollar General. There was an access easement to the hardware store through their parking lot from when those were developed years ago, in anticipation of the Moonlight project.
In the case of Casey's, where you have access on a, that's a, Gardner Road's an arterial, right?
Mm-hmm.
Why was that not designed so that it would be on a collector? The entrance would be on a collector? Because wouldn't 183rd Street be the collector that it would...
Well, they do take access off of the Interior Service Road. Part of what you have is when that development originally came through, that entrance location was approved. So predated these documents, it probably goes back to maybe '03 or '04. So when the development was originally laid out, that access was approved.
Didn't it have to be reapproved when Casey's came up with the plan?
Well, they already had it approved. We didn't really have the authorities to change it.
Isn't that just a convention that you don't have to have a document for, that you should enter a...
Well, it is what it is. I wish I could give you a better explanation.
Well, in that particular case, that's a corner of an arterial and an arterial.
That's correct. And, you know, at some point, it, you know, may evolve into, should that evolve into needing a median in that roadway, it will become a right in, right in, right out, yeah. Another part of this is if you do have, and it would probably fall into the case Mr. Fotovich was talking about, if the document does include a provision for, all existing access will become, if it doesn't meet this, will be considered an existing non-conforming access. Should the property redevelop or should changes be made either on the part of the ownership or if we were to, the city was to redevelop the roadway, that access could be brought into compliance. On a redevelopment, a good case would be there is a proposed parking lot on a change and their entrance is not in compliance, but if that change does, is triggered by an increase of 50 trips per hour during the peak, then they would be able to keep it. But there is provisions to allow changes to bring into conformance through a redevelopment process that are included as Section 14 or Chapter 14 of this document.
David, on that, would, with those costs, they go on to the land of the business owner to, so in essence, we're drafting a document then that said, if we come in and change the road and it affects the entryway, then we're going to force you to pay for that redevelopment of it? Or I missed something?
No. If the city is making the changes as part of a city project, it'll become a city responsibility. If the changes are triggered by the redevelopment of the property, then it would be a cost borne by the redever, the developer.
And it's only triggered then by redevelopment, it's not essentially changing ownership? If someone buys into the piece of land, they don't want to change it, they don't have to change it?
If the changes, if the use is the same...
Okay.
You know, they say you have a, have a dry clinch or something, somebody else new buys it, the change doesn't, the use doesn't change, the zoning doesn't change, certain redevelopment requirements aren't changing, then it stays.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not intended to be onerous for existing, it's just to try as things redevelopment or expand into new areas, that's where it applies.
So for example, if where the centrally building is and Bill's lot and that home, if those were to combine and be sold as a parcel for redevelopment, we could have combined entrance at O'Reilly, for example. I mean, I don't know if that would be the place for it, but that would be...
You could do that.
And we could essentially, or if we moved the entrance further west, we could close the, that one O'Reilly and have the shared entrance there.
Correct. An example of what was done was several years ago when Pizza Hut was remodeled, the entrances were reconfigured at that time. Also, this document will be working with the US-56 corridor plan that we participated with KDOT. So between the two, actually, the US-56 corridor plan would basically take precedence on Main Street, supported by this document.
Just, I'm assuming this document's in compliance with...
Yes.
The 56 plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I don't think the, it's probably more restrictive than the...
Than the 56?
Yeah, but they will work hand in hand. Driveway standards, once again, going back to making them line up, trying as best to keep them as close to 90 degrees as possible, basically providing corner radii to facilitate turning in. One item that we will shoot for, may or may not be able to always get or throw down. Basically, the higher the type road you're accessing, the more stacking you need on the driveway. An example of this was our discussions with QuickTrip. Their original plan was there's a median going into the Moonlight Plaza driveway. They have an entrance, or one of their access points is about halfway, and they really wanted to break that median to allow left turns in. And both city staff and KDOT staff said, no, you know, you have, through peak periods, based on your traffic study, you very likely will cause backups out onto US-56. So QuickTrip folks dealing with all, many cities with much more severe guidance than we have, you know, they said, okay. They did their obligatory ask the question, but didn't fight it too hard because they understood the issues, too. Kind of summarize the benefits, public safety, basically, the more access points you have, the higher the potential for accidents. With regard to signals, the more signals you have per mile, the longer it's going to take you to get there. Not a real surprise. I know as far as business concerns, quote from United States Department of Transportation, a vast majority of the businesses do as well or better after access management projects are completed as before. Once again, if you can get into your business more easily, then you'll have better business. Others, enhance community character and economic and transportation system sustainability. One of the big advantages of good access management, it prevents, it helps you avoid retrofitting in the future when your capacity and safety starts suffering. Another piece of this document are guidelines for transportation impact studies. One of the items is a trigger or a level. It's driven by the size of the development. The larger the development, the broader the study and the more work that has to be done. Very small studies, if you're anticipating under 20 vehicles per hour for your peak, going to have to do one. If it's a fairly small one, you're going to look at the site only and you'll just do some basic reviews. Intermediate sized, they will have to go out and look at the impact of the development to the nearest arterial or collector in each direction. Look at scenarios, which would be what's there today, what happens on opening day when you open your business, and then if it's a phased development, what's going to happen when you're fully built out. The very large developments, such as the Lowe's that we had proposed several years ago, be the same as the previous, except they're going to have to go farther if it looks like it's necessary. Several, as we, under our current information availability, the scenarios would be the same as the two, except also look five years after buildout. Once the city has, we have a traffic model that we use that is actually Alatha's traffic model, so its availability is fairly limited. At some point, as the city grows, we'll either need to develop our own traffic model or we need to enter into a cooperative agreement with Alatha that will allow us to share it. As it is now, they're fairly selective who can use it. I know on, working with Schaefer, Klein and Warren for the school district project because of the...